Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting for February 16th, 2021. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to flag the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as law.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. This night's moment of silence is going to be for all those plow drivers that are out there this winter salting the roads, plowing the roads, making sure the 186 miles of roads here in Londonderry are open and safe. Let's think good thoughts for their safety because they're out there in the middle of the night when we're sleeping. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Chief O'Brien is in the back of the room. He will determine what the social distancing is and the seating is in the room. And if he feels that the room is getting too full or people need to move, he is the emergency management director, so he has the authority to make whatever decision he needs to make. So please follow his direction. And if he needs to move you or ask you to step outside the room so we can keep everybody social distance and safe, please follow his direction. Much appreciated. We're going to start with public comment this evening. I have a couple of presentations, then we're going to move into new business and then move to the interview of the people on the task force very quickly. I have my first thing on my agenda is Braver Angels presentation by Mr. McDonald. Hi, sir. If you can join us, please give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Can I take this off?
You can if you like. I mean, yes, you can. That's your responsibility. I just wanted to see who was right behind you, but I can see it's Brenda. Okay.
My name is Brian McDonald. I live at six Piccadilly Circle in here in Londonderry.
Yes, sir. How would you, what would you like to proceed with?
I'd like to speak a little bit about Braver Angels. It's an excellent organization whose objective is depolarization of America. Okay. I am here tonight to speak about a new Cold War. The old Cold War between the United States and Soviet Union has long been over. However, we are now in a cold civil war that is tearing our country apart. Political polarization, bitterness, and rancor are dividing Americans in ways that threaten the future of our nation. Most dangerous part is the belief that the problem is all on the other side with an unwillingness to consider anything except what we believe to be right and true. We need to find a way past what Braver Angels founder William Dougherty described as taking someone's policy positions and making it a fundamental test of their humanity and integrity. In other words, if their policy positions don't agree with mine, they are a total jerk, scumbag, and complete idiot. The typical situation when family members, friends, or colleagues have political differences is either conflict or avoidance. Think Thanksgiving. We need to help people find a third way, mutual respectful engagement. That's what Braver Angels is all about. One of the most important goals of Braver Angels is to help Americans to better understand each other in today's polarized political environment. Braver Angels' core values are humility, honesty, responsible citizenship, and as Aretha Franklin so famously saying, R-E-S-P-E-C-T, respect. Braver Angels' three-point pledge is, as individuals, we try to understand the other side's point of view even if we don't agree with it. In our communities, we engage those we disagree with, looking for common ground and ways to work together. And in politics, we support principles that bring us together rather than divide us. Braver Angels has a lot of different ways on their website to get involved, and this is their website right here at braverangels.org. One of the ways, and I have done this myself and found it to be a very great experience, is what they call a one-on-one conversation. They have very well-structured guidelines for these conversations, and I found these guidelines to be very helpful. There are four types of conversations: red, blue, black, white, rural, urban, and conversation about race. I chose red, blue, and had a conversation with a woman from Cincinnati, Ohio. We both enjoyed it so much that we've extended it beyond the two sessions set up in the Braver Angels guidelines. The three basic goals of these conversations are more understanding of the experiences, feelings, and beliefs of the other person, discovering any areas of commonality, and finding ideas on how to bridge differences for the sake of our communities and our country. However, before we can reach these goals, we must, as the late Representative John Lewis said, "Release the need to hate, to harbor division, and we must reject the enticement of revenge. Release all bitterness; hold only love, only peace in your heart." I believe that the vast majority of Americans are tired of polarization and political bitterness but feel frustrated and powerless to do anything about it. However, Braver Angels provides us with an excellent way of doing something about it. Therefore, I am asking each and every one of us to join Braver Angels and to help them to rebuild America back to the United States. I would also like to mention another item that is, in a sense, related to Braver Angels. A group of people took the music to "America the Beautiful" and rewrote the lyrics using Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech. I am very impressed with what they've done and recommend checking it out at americathedream.org. That's their website there. It's awesome, really cool. So, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said back in 1968, "Let us move on in these powerful days, these days of challenge, to make America what it ought to be." We have an opportunity to make America a better nation. And I will add that it will be a long and arduous road, but I believe that we can and must do it, and we must start doing it now. I will close by saying thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Excellent points, very well stated and said. I would hope that everyone would get on board with that. Questions from the council? Excellent. Thank you for coming. Thank you for reminding us and everyone else of these points, and very much appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Chief O'Brien, do you want to go next, or do you want to let Trailways go? Okay. We'll let Londonderry Trailways proceed. Mr. Remmel.
I'm missing my, I'm missing my partner in crime, Sandra Lugu, but I'll do my best.
Is she on her way?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. I would say I'd wait till later for you.
It's all right. Bob Remmel, Two Fay Lane. I'm also the president of Londonderry Trailways. Tonight, I'd like to give everyone an update on some of the things that we're working on. I think it's good that we communicate to the town council and also to the general public of Londonderry what we're doing. A lot of people think of us as just the rail trail, but we're trying to branch out a little bit more and do other things around town with trails that are other than the rail trails. So if someone could work the PowerPoint for me, thanks, I appreciate that. We'll move on here. So just real quickly, our main focus right now is Phase Six of the rail trail, which right now the rail trail ends at Harvey Road, and Phase Six takes it from Harvey Road to the Manchester border. We were fortunate enough to receive the largest grant possible through the New Hampshire DOT in order to get this done and also through the town warrant article. So things are progressing as expected. It's a very heavy procedure that we have to follow. We're working very closely with Public Works and planning on this with a hired engineering firm called Hoyle Tanner, and so far, so good. So again, that's the last mile to get to the Manchester border. So next slide. Just to give you a little bit of history, through the generosity of people and companies that have made many donations, we've done a lot of fundraising. We've also received, like I said, a large New Hampshire federal grant for Phase Six. And between the town warrant articles so far to, you know, we've raised about $3 million for the development of the rail trail, which is about six and a half miles grand total. So next slide. So right now, we're doing well. We did Phases One through Five. You know, it's four and a half miles long, and I think that everybody in the room probably knows that last, this past April, when COVID hit, it became wildly popular, and it was a sanctuary for many people. But even in the dead of winter, people are using the rail trail every day, so it's working out very well. Just to kind of reiterate, Phase Six is going to be from Harvey Road to the Manchester Town Line. We're going to go right past the Aviation Museum. And again, there's a team of us that are working on it, but it is a very arduous process to get done. We have to follow very close regulations and procedures, and our goal is to break ground on the construction at some point next year. So if all goes well, we'll break ground and we'll complete it in either '22 or '23. But so far, so good. Next slide. So are there any questions on the rail trail itself, either by the council or by the public?
Looks good.
We're good.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chair. I just, I have to just congratulate you guys for the fact that you've put almost $3 million into the rail trail system, but only a third of that's come from voter warrant articles. You've found other ways, other mechanisms to raise the money, two-thirds of, almost $2 million, outside of, you know, taxation, which is appreciated. So kudos to you guys for that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'm going to let Sandra Lugu introduce herself and take over for the school pathway.
Hi there. Just in time arrival. I thought we were a little later on the agenda. Apologies for that. We just wanted to give you an update on an old story that we're reviving here, and this is the school pathway. And just a quick history, and these are approximate dates. I had to go back in some files and dig up some information. But the short version of the story is it started in 2001 with an application for a federal grant, and it was a really wonderful partnership between the Town Public Works and Engineering, Town Planning, and Trailways, and we worked together on the grant, similar to Phase Six, actually, on the rail trail, but this was many years ago. The grant gets awarded, the town does a warrant article for a 20% match. There's always a delay with these federal grants as to when you get the money. So many years later, they finally released the funds. And I think best as I can remember, it was about 2007 that we completed the project, and there's some nice photos of what it looked like, you know, during construction. So next slide. So here's a map of where we are right now, actually, and if you click through one at a time, click twice, and then pause there, you'll see the original intent of the school pathways down Mammoth Road and Pillsbury, and we're sitting right amongst that, and it connects, you know, four different schools, the library, the town complex, all the things that we know. If you click one more time, actually, two more times, what you may not have realized that part of the original intention was to take this really large anchor neighborhood, the King's Neighborhood, and if you click twice more, and connect it to the Willshire Neighborhood on the other side of the pathway. So it wasn't just about connecting the four schools, it was also about connecting these very large neighborhoods to each other and to the schools and the downtown, you know, not downtown, pardon my bad choice of words, but the central complexes in town and the town common. Can you imagine kids riding their bike who live over on Otterston Drive all the way to see their friend safely on Willshire? So that was the original intent. It's a connection of a lot of different components. So if you click through to the next slide, it's, oh, nope, go back one. If you can't, you can't really tell the difference here, but if you look on that lower left, it turned to a yellow dotted line, bad choice of color there. That dotted line section was not able to be completed, so it stops at the Moose Hill Kindergarten today, as you're all aware. And the reason that happened has to do with the fact that you write the grant in 2001 and you're not building it until 2007. And that delay happened to catch us in, you know, obviously, there's price increases, and it was really a very big increase in asphalt. What was it, petroleum and pavement? That really affected the ability to, how far could we go? And so that's where you know it to be today. That's literally as far as the money could go, and it has to do with having so many years of delay between when you write the grant and when you can actually start to spend the funds and execute. So next slide. So what we did was started to pick it back up in 2020. It's COVID. What else are we going to do? Let's figure out what we can do here. And so we did a couple of steps. Trailways hired Brown Engineering for a new updated design and plan for that dotted yellow line section between Moose Hill Kindergarten and the Willshire Neighborhood. You need to start with fresh plans. You can't use things from long ago. Then Trailways met with Town Public Works and Engineering for input and feedback on the plan. That's a critical step. You don't go forward with a plan like this without getting the Public Works and Engineering, and that was Bob, meeting with the team there. Next slide, sorry, not right there. Trailways obtained a new cost estimate based on the new plan from an experienced person, a company in this type of work, American Excavating, and it came in at $400,000. And then Bob and I went in and we met with the town manager, with Kevin, to provide an update and really get Kevin's input on what would the next smart steps be? How should we approach this? It's a really valuable opinion, you know, to work with Kevin, and you get sort of a bigger picture of what's going on in town. So I think we have just one more slide. So the last slide is about, you know, 2021, what's the way forward? And it was Kevin's suggestion that we come here and talk to you at the town council and provide both of these updates, so you kind of knew where we were going and heading. And to come at a time that wasn't budget season, you know, maybe there's a little break in the agenda, maybe not, but, you know, to catch you in between some of the more heavy times in your calendar, and then to spend the time between now and the end of the year and to work with the town grant writer and see how much of that money we are able to raise through other ways. We're excited to work with the town grant writer, to expose us to things that we're not used to and things, and potential funding sources that are different than the ones we use for the rail trail. And then towards the end of the year, maybe it'll be October, maybe it'll be November, we'll see where we are. We'd like to come back to the town council to report on how we did in the grant funding progress, if there's any gap to the $400,000, and kind of work with you guys to ask, what would a next step be? So we're not asking for anything at all tonight, just information, sharing, and letting you know what we're at, what we're working on, and if it makes sense, you know, in the November, December timeframe to talk about a warrant article. But no need to get ahead of ourselves. We have important work to do between now and the end of the year. And that's it.
Are there any questions from either the town council or the general public on our school pathways project?
Yeah, I do. Hey, Bob, what's the total length of this new section?
The total length is about a third of a mile from the kindergarten driveway to Willshire. Yeah. And it's very important to note that the beginning of it is easy with asphalt. The tricky part is right around the pond, and we met several times with our engineering company, Brown, and we also brought in a wetland scientist to see what would be the most cost-effective way to get through that one area. And we've determined and agreed with the engineer and also Public Works that a boardwalk-style path right around, right through the area of the pond would be most cost-effective at this point. And then it would revert back to asphalt, to Willshire.
Okay, good. So with the pathway on the, well, the bridge that we can, that the road, is going to be separate, and it'll be a boardwalk?
Yeah, and it's all included in the $400,000, but that's part of it. Yep.
Thank you.
I'll be with you. I'm just going to go through the council first. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you for your volunteerism and for the committee's volunteerism. This is so important to our community to have volunteers willing to put themselves out and work like this. In this particular case, you're going to be leaving quite a legacy to the community with, based on the work that you guys have done long after you're gone. This will be here, and people will be enjoying it, so thank you for that.
Thanks.
I just want to say I remember when this started, and that little bridge was the big, I don't know, obstacle in a way. So I'm actually happy to see that moving forward, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the Green Team of Londonderry. We're excited to start working with you guys, and we're working on collecting the bags for the benches for free, and we're hoping to get enough for maybe two or three. So we'd be donating Trex benches for you guys to put within your trails if you wish to have them, as well as putting art and flowers within the trails if you're interested.
We appreciate the partnership with the Green Team. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Kevin.
Bob, my concern with the delay on the current phase of the rail trail is what happened back in the early 2000s with the sidewalk, that the longer the delay is, the cost is only going to continue to increase, and will we have enough money to connect it to Manchester? What exactly is causing the delays right now and getting that money freed up?
Oh, no, the money is freed up for Phase Six of the rail trail. It's just that we started about six months later than we should have because of COVID.
Okay.
But we're moving forward. We've had several public meetings, and we're right on target with the process, the DOT process.
Okay.
I mean, the unfortunate part is inflation is always a killer.
Right.
But there are some safety nets in place to address that when we get to the bidding process.
I just wanted to make sure DOT wasn't holding it up.
They are not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Yep. All right, folks, we're in public comment. If you have a comment, please come to one of the microphones on either end of these podiums and just with your name and address.
My question was answered.
Thank you. If you have public comment, please come forward, come to one of the microphones, and name and address, please.
Ron Dunn, 12 Quincy Road. Merrimack announced on Friday that they were going to sue St. Cobain, and I was just wondering if the town council or Kevin, if you guys knew that and if we were interested in joining them as a town in the lawsuit.
Yes, Mr. Dunn, we do know about it, but I was asking for questions about the trailway. Happy to address that later in the meeting. No worries, no worries. Yes, sir. So it's questions about trailways.
Reversion through Gary Drive.
Wait a minute, let me take this thing off. I'd just like to comment, you know, this is a great idea, you know, connecting the schools, the rail trails, great idea. However, when we're talking about the cost, projected around $400,000, that's a considerable amount of money. Now, we're talking about hot top paving, it, I believe. Are we working with our paving contractor here in Londonderry, Continental Paving? You know, perhaps we could work with them, maybe we get a better figure on that. I mean, they do not only paving, I think they do site work, too. I mean, they could probably build the connecting pathway. And, you know, when we're talking about $400,000, I mean, it's a sizable amount of money. It's not a half a million dollars, but it's close. And we have a lot of impact in this town. And we were talking about, we're talking about spending a lot of money, and it's a great idea to have the various communities connected together, absolutely. Do we have to pave everything?
So that's a great question. I appreciate your interest in especially the economics of it. And we have worked indirectly with Continental on every project that we've done. We always have to bid everything through the town of Londonderry to a contractor. Most of the projects that we have done, American Excavating has been chosen as a contractor, and they're from Derry, and they sub everything out to, well, not everything out, but they sub out all of the paving to Continental. And Continental has, they know what's going on in Londonderry, and they've worked very closely with us to give us better pricing than normally expected, especially even on Phase Two of the rail trail. I was with one of the owners of Continental, and they were giving us asphalt pricing at a highway rate. So we do get good deals. We are very careful with the costs and the control of everything. That's why we've spent a lot of money, and Trailways has paid for everything for the engineering and the wetland scientists to look at every way, shape, and form to make this economical. As Sandra alluded to, our goal now this year is to go out and fundraise through donations, to work with the town grant writer, to see what we can get to lower that cost, to really make it razor-tight with what we are asking the voters to approve.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing, and I'm not against what you're doing. You wouldn't be wrong. But, you know, I'm a little concerned also about with the rail trail between Derry and Londonderry. That's a thing that's kind of up in the air, and that needs to be connected also. So, you know, I don't really want to get into what the status is of that, but, you know, that could be a substantial cost also that's going to require probably grant money from somewhere.
No, I'm glad you're bringing it up, and our model, I think Kevin summarized it well. Our model is always, always, we kind of pride ourselves on it to try to find the money somewhere else first, always. And when we totaled up what it's been so far, it's two-thirds from other sources, and it's a variety of, and it's a variety of sources, and we will do that. So we're, you know, the goal is to come back here with zero ask. That's the goal.
Yeah.
But it's a short window of time for a good chunk of change. So we'll see. Let us see how we do, and you're right.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to spend that kind of town money either. I'm with you. I'm right with you on that.
If I understand correctly, we're talking about a third of a mile, $400,000. Maybe we can do a little better on that.
Do a little trimming, sharpen those pencils.
Yes, ma'am.
Bean Perez, 5 Wesley Drive, I just have a question. Did I understand that the King's development is already connected and all the schools are already connected, correct?
Yes.
So this last little third of a mile is to connect an additional development in town?
Moose Hill School, Moose Hill Kindergarten.
It's already at Moose Hill Kindergarten.
Downs.
Down. So it's not to connect schools, it's to connect a community to the schools?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wondered if you've done any looking into that. This is a 20-year-old project. Have you gone into that community at all and see what, you talked about the children being connected to the school. Have you gone into that community that's not connected and checked to see who's living there now? Are there a lot of kids there now that would utilize this $400,000, one-third of a mile connection to the schools? This started 20 years ago. Those kids aren't there anymore.
No, 10 years ago. Wait, how many years ago? Good grief. Is my date's right?
2001.
Started 2001.
2001, that's 20 years ago.
Geez, am I, how old am I? No, I think that's an excellent.
So.
I thought COVID was a lost year.
It's an excellent question.
It's an excellent question.
The original.
The connection is there between the schools. That is the most important thing.
I think what we should do is do a survey.
I agree. Thank you.
It's your, I think it's a wonderful idea, and maybe the town can help us as far as addresses and putting a postcard out. Let's do a survey and see what the.
Let's do a survey and see what the...
Perhaps what you also wanna do is, I believe, the original plan called for it to connect to the Max Land and all the way to U Pick Two. So that there was gonna be access through the trails of the Apple Orchard as well. You may wanna keep that in mind. You know, to your backyard.
No, that was actually never a part of the plan.
I thought you were gonna be serving lunch, no? So, anyone else on trails? Thank you.
Brendan McDonald, 6 Piccadilly Circle. Do you guys work with the Musquash Park too?
The Trails and the Musquash.
We used to do that a great deal and it's really, the Conservation Commission is the leader in what goes on in trails and maintenance and we kind of support them. So, years ago, it used to be the other way around. Trailways was sort of taking the lead, building trails and bridges. And the Conservation Commission supported us and it sort of flipped. And they really are the stewards and the managers of the land and they lead really great programs, both maintenance and activities there. So, Conservation Commission and we're in a supporting function.
And when I looked at the map, it's like, shows this trails and the signposts, they're numbered. If I understand it right, the one, the post that actually has a number 27 on it, on their map, it says number 20 on it.
So, you found a disconnect?
So, I don't know, 'cause it was from the Farter Road connection, you know, has the white trail. And they recolored the ravine trail, I guess because, I don't know, maybe it was too confusing for people 'cause it was mostly white with a blue dot. Now they're coloring it in yellow.
If you, that would be the kind of information the Conservation Commission would be very interested in. So, if there's a way for her to write an email specifically telling, they would be, they would fix the map based on your input. Or fix the post, or whichever is the right thing to fix.
And I think that somebody corrected it before, 'cause there was this one sign that was otherwise correct. But they put it facing the other way. So that the map, which would've been leading you in the correct direction, was leading you in the opposite direction.
I think we should get on that.
But I think they moved that so it's proper now. But that was sign 22, I believe it was. The way it was facing, they were saying that Alexander Road was this way and it was actually this way.
Lisa, can you take that as a note and get that to Conservation, please? Let's have that looked into, yes?
I just wanted to say, I know that like within the last month, Conservation just put out a new map. And I don't know if you have an older map or a new map, but they went through and they remapped.
It was on the kiosk at the...
I don't know if they, you know, didn't take all of the old ones out, but I do know that there was a new map and they retrailed all of the trails, re-mocked them all to kind of alleviate some of the confusion. So, I just wanted to let you know, I just know they just did that like a month ago.
Well, it was all about Simpson playing it, you know, trying to confuse everybody.
So, Lisa, could we get that to our Conservation Officer and make sure the maps are all correct? In case we have to do a rescue? Glenn's out there every day, so it'll be easy for him to figure it out. Thank you very much for your comments.
I'm getting to know the park a little better on my own, but before I move to Roosevelt, make sure you remember directing me.
Anyone else on trailways? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Chief, you're up.
Good evening. Thanks for taking the time to speak with me. I just wanted to kind of give everybody a little update on the grants status for the fire department. We're currently awaiting what they defined as AFG II. That was a reimbursement for COVID-related supplies back on the onset of the pandemic. And we're in the final phases of approval for that now. That was a $39,000 federal award that we're just awaiting the final confirmation on. We just applied for another assistance to firefighters grant, AFG, for $232,000. What that is gonna be, well, what we're requesting is that basically man lifts install into the back of the ambulances that you load the stretcher onto and it kind of picks up the stretcher and pulls it into the back of the ambulance. We find that, you know, people are getting larger in general. And we're suffering a lot of workman's comp, back injuries and related injuries like that. So, we looked at all the different criterias for applying for this grant and that was, that was one of the top rated to do so. So, that was just applied for on, I believe, February 8th. And what I, the main reason I came to you folks tonight is, back in 2017, the fire department applied for the SAFER grant. And what the SAFER grant was, was that basically to increase our staffing model from what we were currently staffing at and getting a federal portion of those funds back for their wages. So, I believe it was three years, and Justin can correct me if I'm wrong, it was three years at 75%, 50%, then 25%. Am I wrong?
75, 75, 35.
75, 75, 35. SAFER 20 has recently come out, again on February 8th. Applications for the deadline close on March 12th. The difference in this SAFER grant that's coming out this time is they're funding the positions for 100% full for three years. So, I just wanted to bring that to the council for, you know, for you folks to either think about or I just don't wanna pass up an opportunity. There's no saying that we'll get the grant. It's a competitive grant with, you know, 365 or 385 other, you know, full-time departments throughout the country, so. But I just, I looked at it as an opportunity to try and meet those NFPA standards. We're currently staffing at 11 folks per shift, 12 with the first-run ambulance out of Central now that will get reimbursed through the federal FEMA program for COVID-related expenses. Back when I took this position, we were running down to nine. So, right now, we're currently staffing at 12. NFPA standard for the size department that we have is 15. So, you know, we're taking, we're taking the steps to get there and I understand, you know, with the times that we're in and the uncertainty that we are facing, I just didn't wanna pass up this opportunity without letting you folks know.
Okay, so I had asked the chief for calls for service. In 2010, our calls for service were 3,280 out of the fire department. In 2020, our calls for service was 3,731. So, we're increasing like our population is increasing and those services are needed. Again, nothing compels us to take the grant if we're awarded the grant, but it's kind of like the lottery. You gotta be in it to win it. So, I think the chief is looking for consensus from the council to apply. Is there something else I missed, Justin?
No, did you pass that to them?
I did not.
Oh, sorry, no, I gave it to one.
Yes, Tom.
Chief, what are the dates to satisfy the use of the grant?
The application closes on March 12th.
And, I mean, if the grant is awarded, well...
Well...
Three years.
Yeah, it's three years. I mean, the 2017 grant, we just filled that last position, I think, what, last year?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking is that we are looking at an increase in services and population in the Woodmont area. But we have some assurance that if our costs increase more than the tax revenue, I think you probably wear this, that they kick in. So, I guess what I'm suggesting for the council to think about is, is this the right time? Is this too early or is this the right time to start thinking about providing more services in that arena, in that geography? And perhaps working the fact that this grant is gonna save a lot of money for three years, that if perhaps there's some negotiation that might be appropriate with the developers of Woodmont? 'Cause I know that we had at least conceptually talked about maybe a fire station or a public safety facility. Is it time to put that on the table, say, listen, we could populate it with some folks partially from the SAFER grant to save some money there? And that might encourage maybe some investment from the developers for the facility and so forth. So, I'm just throwing out to the council that it might be an opportunity. And I don't know if the timing is right. That's why I asked you the question. I don't know if the, if it might be, it feels to me it might be a little too early, but maybe we should at least entertain it.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know when this opportunity for the 100% funding is gonna come out again. So, that's why, you know, I brought it to you folks. I mean, in the past, it's always been, what Justin outlined, you know, the 75, 65, 35%. So, this was something that just came about this year. So, I just looked at it as an opportunity that, you know, I just, I didn't wanna pass up without letting you folks know.
Okay, well, we can take what Tom brought up as a sidebar and start looking into what calls for service are to that area. Yes, Dan?
I just wanna understand this a little better, if you don't mind. So, for three, the grant, and I do think we should look down it, but I'd like to wrap my head around it. So, for three years, the grant would cover 100% of the three employees?
It'd be, so we would probably go, just like we did in 2017, we would go for the four employees because I have four different battalions.
Okay, so four employees.
Increase the staffing on each battalion by one firefighter. So, yes, it would cover those four individuals' full salaries for a period of three years.
Okay, and that covers like the health insurance, it covers our taxes, like unemployment, disability, all of it? And then after the three years...
Almost their entire union agreement.
I'm sorry?
Almost, almost their entire union agreement.
Oh, so everything? Okay.
Their uniform allowance.
Okay.
So...
So then, but after the three years are up, do you guys have an idea of what that number's gonna be as an input to our taxes later on?
Do you see the sheet I gave you?
Kinda, not really. I don't have my good glasses, so the numbers are always too small.
So, I come here, I come here as the bearer of bad news. We have this opportunity for four firefighters fully funded. However, year four, as you were pointing out, it's 100% taxable. Or we have to let them go, which then hurts our recruiting process for future firefighters. Right.
Or if we have attrition or retirements, we may not make any new ones.
Yes, absolutely.
And we'll have that option.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yes. If we maintain the staffing where it is and we have those four officers, or the four firefighters still on, you're looking at about a 10 cent increase on the tax rate based on this year's valuation estimates.
Okay.
So, in the options below, I kind of gave you other options where we can, we'll receive 100% of the revenue, but we'll only record a certain percentage of it. And then what we don't record, we will use in future years to level it into the tax rate. That way, year four, you're not getting a giant increase.
So, you'd have like, you're building up a kitty almost to pay it forward?
To build them in, that way you're not dealing with a 10 cent increase. In my examples, it's, in year two, it's three cents, then three cents, then five cents, then seven cents, then 10 cents.
Okay, okay.
So, it kind of builds in. So, that could be an option for us as well. I didn't wanna come with just bad news of year four, it's a fully funded.
I think it's a good thing, but it's a good thing to understand the whole picture of it and all of it. The other thing is, is so, in that, those three years, because they're contractual, and I am so stupid when it comes to unions, I'm just gonna say that right now, just so I can understand. Please explain it to me. So, if they get hired, they're gonna get the normal raises that they would get that are with them? Or are they, do you know what I mean? Like, or does that all accumulate and happen on the, I don't understand how that part...
When the folks are hired, they're on probation for the period of a year. So, they're hired as a probationary firefighter. They're not legally covered by the contract at that time. They're an employee at will until they pass their probationary period.
Okay.
Once they pass their probationary period after that year's timeframe, yes, then they, they'll sign up with the union and they're covered by all the union contracts.
Okay, okay. I just didn't know if we had to pay it on the backside, like...
Those increases are included in the grant.
Oh, okay. That's, I guess that's what I was going for. Thank you. That's, that was all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're good. Alright, folks, rarely would I ask this, but we are in public comment. So, if we're in public comment and we're discussing this and you have a question and you would like to ask, please approach one of the microphones.
Is this about the fire department?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to the other public comment. I'm gonna get there. Just taking one subject at a time. We good? So, is the consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Alright, chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Alright, now we are in general public comment. So, if you would like to approach the council and make a comment, alright, we have a five-minute limit.
Hi, Ron Dunn, 12 Quincy Road. I was just wondering, on Friday, the town of Merrimack announced that they were gonna sue St. Cobain because they didn't install the air filtration systems that they were supposed to install, which was mandated by the Department of Fire and Water Services. And I was just wondering if Londonderry considered at all joining that lawsuit with them?
So, our attorney has reviewed it. We are actively engaged. We have been actively engaged with Merrimack and their attorneys for three years. And whenever we can adjoin something and it actually has standing, we're going to adjoin.
Okay. Excellent. I know sometimes you talk to the town council chairman over there and he had just said that they cannot legally operate right now in the town of Merrimack. So, I didn't know if we could help them enforce that.
I'm having a very hard time understanding.
I'm sorry. I didn't know if we could help them enforce that.
We are looking at every possible legal remedy that we can possibly go after. And it's a very complex, difficult problem and you'll hear more about it later in the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else for public comment?
Either C, or I have this up, one of the two. Christine Perez, I live at 5 Wesley Drive. I live one in the, in one of the approximately 1,100 households in Londonderry that are part of a 55 development or apartment or assisted living. There are also approximately another 1,000 55-year-old private homes in Londonderry. There are many veterans that live in these households, ones from the Korean War, the Cold War, the Vietnam War, even from the Gulf War since it was 30 years ago. I do understand that the town of Londonderry has implemented, and correct me if I'm wrong, because this is hearsay, implementing, allowing, as the state is, additional veterans who were not actively serving during wartime to be able to get tax benefits. Is that correct?
Yeah, they get tax, they can apply for a tax credit.
Okay. So, these developments, these 1,100 households in these developments, we do minimal, if any strain on the town. We don't have children in the school system. You don't plow our roads. And in addition to that, in my development, we pay Pennachuck $21,000 a year for our fire hydrants. People who live outside of this type of thing, fire hydrants are paid for as part of their taxes. My tax rate is the same as theirs. So, what I'm asking of you is, in April 1, 2018, RSA 7228-B increased the benefit, the veteran's benefit from $51 up to 500 to up to 750. Many, many, many towns in New Hampshire have increased their veterans' benefits. And I do know you are now allowing other veterans, but they're working. And these veterans, older veterans in 55 communities plus, are no longer working. I'm asking the town to please consider raising the tax benefit for veterans above the 500, whether that be an additional $100, whether it be an additional $200, but to please consider it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else for... Okay. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Doug Thomas, one forty-three Mammoth Road. Um, I come here today, I, I have a couple of things to say, but one, I, I come here as one of your state representatives to let you know a, a small progress report. A little while ago, I received an email from, uh, Kevin Smith on a very important bill that the town is, um, getting involved with, HB three fifteen. I won't go into it. It's a highly complex bill, but it's about, uh, uh, energy power aggregation. And I just wanted to report that because of a lot of testimony that's been received, um, and although the original bill, was, was one of the ones I was supporting, we realized that the bill as written was not supportable. However, I'm pleased to report that there has been some progress made. I had a conversation today with our chair. And there have been a lot of conversations with both sides of the fence on this bill. Language is being rewritten. Some words are being changed. And it, the, the third or fourth draft is being reviewed this week as, as I'm talking now. And we are hopeful that there will be some consensus that we might be able to get to by, by next Monday when we meet again to talk more, uh, more about this bill. So I appreciate the town's involvement and I appreciate the testimonies that were made. And there, there, there were, there was room for improvement and that's what we're working on now. Can't not guarantee if it, if everybody will a, agree finally in the end, but there, but they have been, there has been some, you know, give and take. So, um, that's, that's my report on that. And I hope, uh, I hope it does come out the way we're satisfactory to all parties. I know that one of the major parties, uh, was warming up to it. And so we can be hopeful and that, that we can get there. The main purpose of this bill, in, in my opinion, was to facilitate one portion of it, which was community aggregation, which would allow Londonderry to, um, proceed with the contract in a faster way for the, so that the rules could, could be written and so you can, uh, get, you know, better prices on your, on your, your energy power. So hopefully that will happen. And the second thing I was going to say, I, I just wanted to say this, um, your, your state legislators all over the state have been under a tremendous amount of difficulties this year because of the COVID situation. And there have been enormous obstacles that had to be overcome for us to carry out the people's business. And I just wanted to let you know that Londonderry's own, um, representative Sherman Packard, Speaker Sherman Packard, uh, has been guiding us through, uh, a very difficult s, uh, situation, uh, being thrown with very many obstacles. And we are getting the work done in a, in a most historic way. And I think the town of Londonderry should be proud of its, um, of its, uh, you know, of this particular state rep being able to guide us through all of these, uh, difficult things. So I appreciate that. And we will get the people's business done despite all of these obstacles. And we're, we're very proud of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doug.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to be closing public comment. Moving on to new business. New business order two oh, two one dash oh five, an order relative to the expenditure of maintenance trust fund for various projects. Who's presenting?
I'll be presenting. This is, uh, largely, um, just winter maintenance, town hall, fire department, police department, library, the historical center, the access center, and the senior center.
I'll accept a motion to approve.
Still moved?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. And that is approved. Okay, on all business, no all business, approval of minutes. Um, I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes for February first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Onto the next item. Appointments and reappointments. So ladies and gentlemen who are here tonight, we're interviewing for the PFAS task force. I want to be, um, abundantly clear on some things here. The, um, we are looking to move very swiftly. Uh, we have been delayed a number of months through court cases and delays because of the pandemic. And we are looking to move at a very rapid pace. So those of you who are interviewing tonight, please understand that we're going to be, you know, pushing this forward as fast as absolutely possible. We're going to be looking to come to a plan that we can execute with our attorneys and have some understanding of what our next steps will be, working in conjunction with the attorneys, with Commissioner Scott's team at DES, and to understand where Londonderry stands and where funding may or may not be. Um, I've already had a conversation with, uh, with Representative Pappas about getting me a hundred, and then me, the town of Londonderry, a hundred million dollars. So if you're not going to come and talk to me about a hundred million dollars for a water system, I don't really have a whole lot to talk about. So we're pushing on every single place we can push to find funding for something that was not the town's fault. Was not the well owner's fault, which everybody is an individual well owner. We are looking to get relief here that is long-term relief. So that's why we put a resolution out looking for people with, with scientific talents to help us get there quickly. So that there'll be some things that you can teach us because we're not scientists. We're barely politicians. But we want to get things done. So we're looking for your help here. Couple of things to understand is, is when I say it says a hundred million dollars, it takes one hundred and twenty million dollars to run the town. It's about a dollar fifty on your tax rate if we had to fund all of this ourselves. And then your individual hookups to your homes that could run anywhere between two thousand and four thousand dollars, depending on where your water comes in in your home. So this is, this is going to be one of the main things that the council will be focused on going forward. The budget is done. This is the thing that we finally have the opportunity and guidance to handle. So when you come up and we're talking to you and you're introducing yourself to us, please show us where you stand on this. And we're looking for that level of commitment and passion. This will be a thankless job. For those of you who don't know, the town only controls twenty-three percent of the, of the taxes in town. The other seventy-two percent are controlled by the schools and by the, um, and by the, uh, the county and, and the state. So we have the opportunity here to try to do something great that will be long-term effect for the residents of this town. So I leave you with that and I'm, the, the list I have in front of me is in alphabetical order. So I will, it, so I will call people up. We will try, please open with a statement about yourselves. Tell us why you want to be here. Tell us why you want to get involved. And, um, and then we're going to ask you some questions. So if that works for everybody, yes, please.
Yeah, uh, I've talked to several people in town and I, and I assure you, uh, that, uh, we really haven't been dragging our feet on this. This is the most single important environmental impact since the toxic waste sites in this town. We take it very seriously. I can tell you that, you know, even though we're going to move as quick as we can, it doesn't happen overnight. That's the reality of things. And I, I want to start by saying, uh, that I appreciate, we had over twenty-one volunteers, I think.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two volunteers. I truly appreciate, uh, people stepping in and volunteering for this. This is a pretty specialized area. And like John said, I, I'm not a hydrologist and, and a scientist. So we need your help. And we're going to move as quick as we can. Uh, and I do sincerely appreciate the volunteers. Thank you.
So with that, folks, as a person whose well is directly affected, I would like to call the first person, Doug Curry? Mr. Curry, come on up and introduce yourself, please. Name and address first.
Hi there. My name's Doug Curry. I live at three fifty-six Winding Pond Road. I appreciate the, uh, the passion and interest the board's, uh, the council's taking in this topic. Uh, I've been involved in water systems in Londonderry for decades as, as the president of Century Community Association. We have three hundred forty-four homes attached to our water system and, um, our, our wells unfortunately are, uh, above the PFAS threshold for, for PFOA. So this is an issue that's affected us directly and, um, it's one I'm very concerned about. Uh, my background is, um, engineering and I have a good head for math. So I think I can help the, the group with any, uh, you know, arithmetic and mathematical related issues, engineering issues. And, um, I've been in town for forty years, so I know the area. That's about it. That's all I really have to say. Welcome to your questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, for Mr. Curry, Deb?
Can I, can you give me an idea of what kind of time you have available to, to like during the day, go to like Concord for some of these meetings or, you know, reading all of the reports that have been put out and updated and things like that? So available time?
Yeah. So I, I do have a full-time job, but my schedule is flexible. I'm planning on transitioning to part-time at the end of March. So I will have more time then. Uh, but generally speaking, I've, I've got lots of COVID time. I'm home.
Who doesn't these days?
I don't, I don't have to commute. So, uh, yeah, I've got time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
I know this is a loaded question, but where do we start?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm really looking forward to finding some of this data. I'm, I'm curious about where Penachuck Public Water is in town. I'd love to see the, the drawings of where, you know, what our opportunities are for connection. I'd love to see, uh, data from, from the state on where they think, uh, flows, uh, of PFAS bloom, where, where it's coming from, where it's flowing, uh, what, what the trends have been in, in readings of the, um, contaminants. And, and then getting some data about individual wells, you know, where do we stand in town? Uh, you know, how many wells are we talking about? What areas are most har, uh, hard hit? Uh, what are the options for public water versus treatments locally? Can we, can we look at local, um, remediation sites versus a global approach? I mean, there's lots of possibilities, but I think first it's getting our, our hands on the data.
Thank you.
Tom?
What is, what are your, um, first of all, thank you for volunteering. Where, where would you think is your biggest challenge right now as, as president of, of the CCA?
Well, we have a, an old system. I mean, it's a fifty-year-old system. So my understanding is if we were to connect to, to Penachuck Water, uh, their preference is to bring it to our existing pump house. And frankly, I don't know, uh, what that means for our distribution system. You know, our distribution system is PVC pipe. As I said, it's fifty years old. Our pumps are, you know, are fifty-year-old pumps basically and rebuilt, but, uh, you know, it's, so it's a question in my mind as to whether the system can, can handle the, the public water source, or whether we actually have to think about different distribution system, which would be a huge expense.
Any further questions? So I guess, I guess I get to ask the question that nobody likes. Always have to ask candidates about conflict of interest. Do you feel you have any conflict of interest?
I don't.
That you want to tell us about?
No, I don't believe I do. Um, I mean, I'm a, I'm a, as you said, a public water system operator. So, um, in some sense, I've, I've been involved in this, on that, on that side of things for quite a while. I don't think there's any conflict between that and what's happening in the rest of town. I mean, I represent about four, four or five percent of the town's water users. But we're all part of the same town, so I don't see there's any conflict there at all.
No. Um, so we're going to, we're going to try to work through this process and make decisions as quickly as possible. And, um, Lisa will be taking the point on keeping everybody informed.
Great.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Um, I have Mr. Jim Dukakis. Did I say that correctly? Yes, sir. I have to step out for a minute. I'm going to hand the gavel to, um, Mr. Dolan and I'll be right back. Okay. I, if you want to wait for me to come back, happy to do that, but I just need to step out for one second.
I can wait. That's fine.
You prefer to wait?
Yeah, I'll wait. Yeah.
Is Craig Duret here tonight? You, you'll be next.
Thanks. Sorry about that.
You prefer to wait?
Yeah, sorry about that. Too much coffee. So sir, um, so you're at, uh, Four Michelle Lane. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, I'm at Four Michelle Lane, which is on the southwest part of town. And, um, I worked, I worked for the Army Corps of Engineers for thirty-five years before I retired from them. So I currently work part-time. Just working for various contractors or consultants on construction projects. That's pretty much what my forte was. Supervising construction projects for a number of years. So I've worked on water treatment plant construction down at Otis Air Force Base. I worked on Charles George landfill in Tingsborough, Mass, way back when that was a superfund site. And right now, probably to answer your question, John, I don't see a conflict of interest. I did see when I read the report that the state's consultant is Weston and Sampson. And I currently work part-time for them as a per diem employee. I don't really see a conflict unless you do. I just look at it like, you know, I'm a, I'm a town resident. I'm on that section of town that, when I read the report, looks like there was some hits of PFAS, um, in that area. So, and I'm on a private well, well myself. So, so I could help in that sort of thing. Uh, I, I did read the NOBIS report. I guess they did that for the town. And, um, they did have a pretty aggressive schedule in there. So to answer your question, I do work part-time. So if I have to go to Concord, I can do that. That, that shouldn't be a problem. I guess the question, a few of the things I have probably on my end is, I mean, where did you get that hundred million dollar estimate?
So I, I actually got that from, um, I got that from the town's engineer and from DES.
And is that to hook up every single well in Londonderry?
Well, not to hook up the wells, to bring in public water.
Bring in public water.
So the, the number may be two hundred million, but that's the number they gave me was a hundred million. The full, in full disclosure, what the town engineer said was minimum of a hundred million if I'm only doing water. It's two hundred million if I'm bringing sewer with it. And if we're going to do this, we should bring sewer with it, is what he said.
I mean.
Now, that number may be wrong.
No, I, I mean, if that's his estimate, that's fine. I don't have, I mean, I, I, I don't have any knowledge of it to know whether that's good or bad, other than to say that, um, you know, then you've talked about, then you mentioned Congressman Pappas. So I guess he's going to have to try to put that money in a bill and get that money.
Well, let's just say it was an interesting conversation.
Or since it's PF, you know, since it is PFAS, is that kind of linked to St. Obane itself?
Well, so that's, so part of this, what we're trying to accomplish with this task force is, is there is some PFAS sites in town that you, um, that probably are, you know, are not directly attributed to by St. Obane. But there is a, is a, what they call a blue line, um, uh, dissent decree that is at High Range Road. Now, the big question becomes is, is that that decree was put in place when the number was seventy parts per trillion. Now that the state dropped it to twelve and fourteen parts per trillion, should that decree be to ninety-three? And that's, and that's part of what we have to go and start pushing. I, I don't think we have to push the state in that direction, but we need to accelerate what the state is doing and what their remedy is. And in, and until the bill was passed and the governor signed off of it, it gave us no tools to accelerate because the judge had stayed the order. So what we're trying to accomplish here is, is that by getting people like yourself who understand this, come up with a plan. We were, we were on the phone with our attorneys today. And we asked them to watch these meetings and watch it so that we can come up with a way that, who is the party that we need to have standing with to hold responsible so that we can fix this? so that we can fix this problem?
Right.
And that, that's really what we're trying to do.
Mm-hmm.
If that makes sense.
It does. I've worked on sites where, you know, back when it was Superfund, either the federal government, it was pretty much the federal government paid for the cleanup, and then they went back after the responsible party in a court order to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Then I've worked on other sites where actually, New Hampshire DES actually funded some of the work. So that's, I was just, you know, looking at it, like, obviously, if you could get state funding or federal funding based on, you know, based on the contamination, obviously that's easier. Because I, you know, I would think too, that if, you know, if you have a resident that doesn't have, his well contaminated, he's not gonna pay for the hookup.
And that would be their choice.
Right, that would be their choice, right.
And I, you know, I mean, the last thing anybody wants to do is take a $100 million bond to the ballot.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's option, you know, seven, if there were seven options.
Right.
So, you ready for me to run through the board?
Yes.
Depp?
Well, you stole my question, so now I have to think of something else. So, I guess I'm gonna ask you, have you been following? Have you done any research in advance, like, looked at any of the information that's out there at all in regards to this?
I did. I read the NOBIS report that came out, that NOBIS did for the town in 2019.
Yeah.
And I read, you know, some of the other information on the website. You did bring up the 70 parts per billion.
Trillion.
And I, trillion, yes. And then the state, or at least they came, they came back and said, someone said 12 parts per trillion, but when I understand, that's being fought, that's being contested in court, correct? Because obviously, they don't want to pay for the 12 parts per trillion if it's gonna be 70. Am I reading that correctly?
So it was, there was a, a legal action taken. The order was stayed by the Superior Court Judge. The legislature passed the bill that the governor signed, making it 12 parts and 14 parts per trillion here in the state, and there has not been additional legal action that we've been made aware of. So as of right now, there is not. Part of the problem I have, you know, is, in the conversation with Representative Pappas is, is that the EPA is at 70 parts per trillion.
Yes.
So, you know, so we have a lot to navigate here, and, and as I said in my opening statement, and trying to do it in a very efficient way.
All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. So those are the only things that you've researched so far?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Good? Jim?
I really don't have any questions. I do have some experience with the Corps of Engineers, and my experience is, it's a tough gang. And I've also had experience with Weston Sampson, and you're a, you're a good help.
Thank you. Tom?
Could you tell us a little bit about your, more of the work you've done with the groundwater treatment in Pepperell?
Yeah, that site is, I'm actually currently, yeah, working over there now, and we're in the process of building, of constructing a water treatment plant. It's about a $7 million project, and I'm the onsite person working with the contract. I work for Weston and Sampson. The project was put out to bid, and it's being funded by Commonwealth of Mass. and the town of Pepperell. So I'm there to oversee that plant construction to make sure that it's, you know, that it gets completed as designed, as designed. And that's supposed, probably, has probably two more months to run at the most.
So this is groundwater, groundwater treatment for drinking, or is this black water treatment?
No, it's for drinking water.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? So, sir, we will, we're going to try and move through this quickly, and Lisa will be in touch.
Okay.
And, and thank you for coming down, and, you know, everything here is an education for us at this point, so we appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Duret's not here this evening, right?
Yes.
He is here?
Yep.
Hi, Mr. Duret, wanna come on up? Hi, sir, name and address for our records, please.
Good evening. Craig Duret, 133 West Road, Londonderry.
Would you like to make an opening statement, sir?
Sure. I'll start off with your first question. The first interviewee was, why do I want to be on this force, the task force? And I feel I have a lot to provide, based on my experience, my professional experience and education. I currently am dealing a lot with PFAS in my current job, environmental assessments, cleanup, remediation of sites, wastewater, groundwater. So I have substantial experience and training in it, so I feel I have a lot to contribute in that regard. Second is, I've been following the St. Obane issue for, when it first reared its head, and have been, read every report that's on the site, the town site, the EPA site. I've also read a lot of the Tinkham sites, Tinkham, Superfund site. I follow, having worked on Superfund sites in the past, I'm following their PFAS issues there as well, as well as what's happening over by Apple Tree Mall.
And you figure it's just gonna keep moving east anyway, so you're gonna see it in Derry eventually, right?
Not necessarily, knowing the hydrogeology of that area, I, here we go.
Very good.
Yeah, I like that.
So that's, that's good information that we're gonna learn here, so let's go the other way this time. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've talked about providing a, a new water system, a Penachuck, perhaps, based water A less glamorous solution might be reverse osmosis at, at the individual home, as, as also as an option. What do you think about that?
Well, reverse osmosis is a more expensive treatment system, and it, for every, pretty much for every gallon you drink, there's about two gallons go to waste, too, in that regard. There's, if you're, for a house treatment system, you can do point of entry, which would treat all the water coming into the house, such as, you might do reverse osmosis for a large system like that, or carbon absorption, or you can do a point of use, which is, whatever tap you're using for consumption and cooking, is those taps are hooked up to a small, smaller treatment system. Expense-wise, it's cheaper to do than a full house, cheaper to maintain. In terms of a water supply, bringing in this water, I'm not really familiar with how the territorial issues work for Penachuck versus bringing in, maybe tying into Manchester Water. I know Penachuck can be more expensive, it is over in Derry, certainly, but those are obviously the options.
I think currently what we have is, although some of, some water is provided by Manchester Water Works, it's purchased by Penachuck and provided by Penachuck.
Okay, so they're playing the-
In terms of where the bill gets paid to.
Sure, so they're playing the middleman with their, and providing utilities to bring it in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm also, I'll say that. Depp?
No, I'm good.
So, being an employee of, of the next town, you know, no, no conflicts there, not gonna, Dave Karen isn't gonna call me and say, you can't do this?
Not that I know of, unless there's gonna be some conflict between the two towns that I'm unaware of, in that regard.
No, we have an intermunicipal agreement, as you're well aware.
Certainly, one of the things that you gotta keep in mind, while St. Obane certainly is a significant contributor, has been proven for the, certainly the western portion and northern portion of town, that it's not necessarily gonna be the only contributor that we'll find.
Agreed.
And just on the work that I've done alone for Town of Derry, in that process, I've read the NOBIS reports, because it included surface water sampling. Do you, ubiquitous nature of PFAS right now and the environment is outrageous. And, and I'm kind of outspoken on this, I think EPA dropped the ball years ago. They've known for almost 10 years that we already have in our blood system, close to most residents. Their 70 parts per trillion is only a health advisory, it's not an enforceable standard. And they've been talking about doing that for a long time now, come up with one, instead I think they're sitting back waiting, letting the states do their own thing. There's probably about a dozen states right now that have come up their own standards, so.
All right. Anything else?
The only thing I, I do want to ask is your time. Are you gonna be able to scooch out of Derry if you have to go to Conqueror, or?
It's, I think, a lot of the work I do right now with Town of Derry, is that can actually benefit us and me in this position, because I'm, I-
I agree.
I stay up to date already on the regulations, particularly with regard to PFAS, and changing standards, one thing to consider, too, coming down the road. Effective July 1st, the arsenic standard drops from 10 parts per billion to 5. So, and that's an enforceable at that point.
Oh, boy.
So, consider that, you know, when you look at the NOBIS report, they did test arsenic, some areas showed that, and they actually implied about the standard coming down, that those that did not exceed a standard before will now.
Yeah.
So, so bringing in water, it's, you'd be taking care of more than one bird with one stone.
Yeah.
In that regard.
Well, that was the point the guy at DES made. He says, you know, he says, you can go with point of entry systems, he says, but, you know, he says, if you're on a water system, he says, we can keep, the water systems can keep up with the new standards and new technology, versus you having to change your point of entry system every time there's a new, something new you have to deal with.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that was the point that they had made. Very interesting. Well, I thank you. Appreciate it, and we're gonna, we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Ann Fenn? Hi, Ann.
Hi, how are ya?
Good, thank you. Name and address for our records, please.
Sure. Ann Fenn, F-E-N-N, F as in Frank, E as in Edward, double N. And I live at 18 Partridge Lane in Londonderry. I've lived there about 25 years in the Town of Londonderry. In terms of a statement, I guess, I started out my career in the environmental area, working for the US Congress for a couple of years, the Office of Technology Assessment in DC, and then I went to EPA in DC at headquarters. I've worked for EPA for about, and the federal government, for about 42 years. I just retired in August 2019. And my latest job at EPA in Boston, went from the headquarters office, the DC office, to the Boston office. And I also worked for the state of Massachusetts for a couple of years, writing their hazardous waste regulations. But at EPA in Boston, I was responsible for working with other federal agencies in New England, in the six New England states. So I was responsible for essentially trying to improve the overall environmental compliance under all of our laws, 14 laws that we have, that we administer, and regulations, including the federal regulations and the state regulations. And that involved sort of a two-pronged approach, working with the other federal agencies. The first part was trying to provide as much assistance as we could, everything from seminars, conferences, you know, informational materials we would give out. I had tons and tons of meetings with different federal facilities in New England, everybody from the Manchester VA Hospital, whom we ended up inspecting a number of times, to P's, Air Force Base, National Guard. But, so the first part was essentially trying to provide as much information as we could to people, to help people comply with the regulations. The second part was going out, and I led teams of our EPA inspectors to inspect some of these federal facilities and federal agencies, and we discovered a lot of issues, a lot of problems. PFAS is not an unusual issue, as you all know. It's essentially now a national issue. There is even a Department of Defense committee, which is focusing on PFAS. So it's becoming sort of the Agent Orange of, you know, this, this 10 years. I am not a scientist, so I want to make that clear right up front, but I am a political scientist. And I've worked with, you know, the federal agencies, the local folks, and my, my thing has been trying to get information to people, as much information as we can, to those people who are affected by this, to all those folks who have problems with their wells, et cetera. I worked in the Superfund program at headquarters, and I worked in the community relations office, and developed their first training programs, et cetera. But I've been always very concerned to make sure that the citizens of a particular town or area, that their input is sought after, and then listened to carefully, and incorporated in whatever the solutions are gonna be. I've also worked quite a bit, I worked on the Hill for quite a while, so I've worked with the congressional delegations in a variety of different places. You asked, what would you do first? And one of the things that's sort of come up here, but hasn't been directly applied to yet, is, I'm a little surprised that, that DES hasn't identified all the major sources yet. And, and we-
I'm a little surprised by a lot of things DES has done.
Yeah.
Thank you for saying that.
I mean, we have to identify the sources, the major sources of PFAS, and I'm sure there are quite a few sources, but that possibly means going to EPA and saying, okay, we'd like to look at your emergency response compliance data, your TRI data. Let's hear TRI data for this, for the Town of Londonderry and the Town of Derry. There is data out there, we just need to access that data. TRI data is toxic release data, which is provided every year, every March, by a variety of all companies that have more than 50 people. So there's a lot, you know, Coca-Cola, because, I mean, we don't know where this PFAS is coming from, and, and that's really important to identify.
Agreed.
We also have the four Superfund sites in this one town.
Correct.
And that's extremely, having worked at Superfund at headquarters in our DC office, and looked at all the Superfund sites across the country, it's extremely unusual to have four in one town.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
In fact, all my friends at EPA said, you're moving where? What are you doing? Are you crazy?
It's the shining light on the hill.
There you go. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, but I thought with the experience I have, and now that I'm retired, and I'm not driving back and forth into Boston, I could provide, you know, any help, I'd be willing to provide.
Well, thank you for volunteering, because I don't think we could afford you as a consultant, so. I'll go over here again, I'm trying to just break it up a little bit. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's interesting, as a political scientist, how you view this, because the way I see it is, we're getting a lot of PFAS headlines right now.
Oh, yeah.
And that's kind of what's brought it up onto the table. But when you talk to some of the scientists at the state, they're equally, if not more concerned about the legacy arsenic in our, in our wa, in our water, and I think they have more data over many years. PFAS is so relatively new.
Mm-hmm.
They don't really understand that they're seeing PFAS in breast milk, which was alarming, which brought the, which caused them to bring the numbers down as part of their formula. But arsenic, we have data, or they have data that shows inhibiting the learning process of young people in school that are, that have high arsenic in their consumption in their water. So we, we have some disturbing data there, too. So I just wanted to throw that back to you. What, how do you feel about the PFAS?
You mean compared to other contaminants?
The, from a political scientist's viewpoint, the PFAS explosion in the media versus the legacy arsenic problem that, that some would say is, is if not the same, at least maybe even more concerning than the PFAS.
I say they're all problematic. I mean, we did inspection, you, you actually, the state of New Hampshire had the first lead case here, where a child died in the Town of Manchester because of being exposed and eating lead in the lead paint that was on the back porch of a, of a double decker in Manchester. So I'm concerned about all of it. I'm concerned about lead, mercury, arsenic. Arsenic is naturally occurring, radon is naturally occurring. I think that you have an opportunity, because PFAS is getting a lot of attention right now. So politically, we've got a pretty good window here, and that's why you're getting Chris Pap, Chris's attention, that's why you'd get Jeannie Shaheen's attention, and Maggie's attention, because they worked on the P's. attention and Maggie's attention, because they worked on the P's case. I, I don't know if this is enough of a situation, because I haven't seen all the data, and we don't know where all the sources of PFAS are, to determine, should the state even propose certain areas of London Dairy as another Superfund site? Should we go after those sources as potentially responsible parties?
You're going right down the path we're looking to go down. That's what we're trying to figure out.
Right. So, there are lots of questions.
Well, way more than we want, but, but the good news is, is you probably know somewhere where the mess is.
Well, I sure know your four sites, and I have an idea of some of the other sites, but I think we can, we can find out where the other sources are. And the other issue that we haven't brought up, and it is a very sensitive issue, is the question whether or not there have been any requests, say, of CDC to do some work on cancer clusters in our town. Have we looked at whether or not there could be any cancer clusters as a result of PFAS or other materials in the water?
I'm not aware of CDC having done anything, but I am aware of that this conversation has taken place in London Dairy over the last 25 years.
Yes. Yes.
So, it's the kind of thing that could be done, and citizens have even done their own cancer cluster studies.
Jim?
Ann, you stole my thunder.
Oh. I'm sure there's some more thunder lightning there.
My question as far as where we start. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
You seem like you're an information gatherer, and you're quite, have an ability to disseminate that information correctly, and, and being able to do that is very, very important. So, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
So, Ann, I think we, you've answered most of our questions and everything. It's good to know that somebody knows the plumbing down in Washington, and that would be helpful. So, thank you for...
It does change, that plumbing does change.
Oh, yeah.
But if you got to process the organizational theory down, then you're a little bit better.
Terrific. Thanks for volunteering, thanks for coming down.
Sure. Thank you.
Is Mr. Garciide here? Hi.
How are ya?
Good, how are you?
Good. Tommy Garciide, 2 Justin Circle. I don't know, I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring. I manage a drilling company, actually in Dairy, New England Boring. We've been testing for this stuff since, I guess, since it started, really. It's, it's still kind of a fairly new contaminant. I guess my relationship with this is, in order to obtain that data, you need to get down into the ground to get that data. That's what we do. That's what I do on a daily basis. PFAS, PFOAs, all of it comes across my desk every week. There's always something new popping up. I guess the reason why I want to be a part of this is because I know the industry really I drilled for, we drill for, we do geotech for all water lines, sewer lines, you know, all around New England. We do a lot of environmental work all around New England. I personally drilled at all of these Superfund sites in London Dairy. I don't know, I guess I just want to see this issue resolved swiftly, quickly. I'd like to lend a hand if I can.
Are you related to Keith?
No. I get that often.
That's a safe question.
Oh, yeah, it's, you know.
No.
You guys are in similar businesses.
Kind of. His is a little dirtier than mine.
Good. He would say that his will never go away. I knew his father as well. So, Deb, over to you.
I'm gonna ask the same question that I've asked before. Do, do you have enough available time to put into this? I think this is gonna take a lot of time, a lot of research, maybe not the meetings, but it's gonna take a lot of catching yourself up on all the studies that have been done and doing a lot of research and reading. And do you feel that you have the adequate time to put into it?
I'd like to say I'm fairly informed, where I see this on a daily basis.
Okay.
I work really with all of these engineering firms and environmental firms. I know where the sources are, some, somewhat. I know where it's going. You see the patterns, you see the maps. Just a matter of what do we do to stop it. As far as my time goes, I can make myself as available as possible.
Okay.
If need be, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that stuck out on the information in front of me, Tom, is your, your work with DES currently. I anticipate this is, a lot of this committee's work is gonna be information data gathering and arranging that data and making sense of it, and then helping the town make decisions based on that data.
Sure.
Is your, are your contacts with DES something that can be leveraged to, to gather, you think that you have the right, the right touchpoints in DES to gather a lot of the data that we might be looking for?
I don't know if I would leverage anybody at DES. We don't really work directly for them, we're subbed out by a consultant who is contracted through DES. So, the, ultimately, the information that we get goes through that consultant to DES. We have contacts at the state, of course, because we do work with them all the time, but as far as, I don't know, leveraging information, you could ask very nicely, I suppose.
I guess what I'm looking for is, you know who to call on, on what chemical or what, what issue, you know, you're not starting from zero, you know, you have a good, pretty good roadmap?
Yeah, you can track them down pretty quickly. Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, Mr. Butler stepped out. So, you, you have a, you have a fan base, because I'm getting texts about you.
Yeah.
Saying, you know, "You just had a baby, and you're a good guy." So, and what I'm getting is, is that he's a doer.
Well, I've been here since I was born, and I'm still here. You can't really get rid of me. I just had, I got a seven-month-old at home. Just found out that our well is contaminated. I knew the west side of the river had some issues, obviously. Wasn't, until, you know, about a year ago, I wasn't really too concerned with us, and then I started seeing some of the maps, and, you know, this stuff is stretching across Mammoth. It's, yeah, I don't know.
Hey, part of this, you heard me at the beginning, part of it's about passion. So.
It's gotta fix.
I don't know where Jim went, but anyone else, questions? We good? Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down.
Thanks, Sean.
Appreciate you, you know, being here in town all this time. Okay, so I'm gonna butcher this next name. George?
Caziolka?
That's it. I didn't, I didn't, thank you for saving me, I didn't really want to butcher it. Hi, George.
Hi, sir.
Name and address for our records, please.
Sure. George Caziolka, 236 High Range Road.
Hi, sir. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Sure, yeah. So, I'm a relatively new resident here, just been here around two years. On a well, did get a letter from DES several months back, saying that neighbors on either side have elevated levels of PFAS in their well water. So, I got on the list, got mine sampled, waiting another three or four weeks for the test results. But, but in the meantime, I mean, you know, it's, it's a concern, like for, for other reasons, I guess, I've been, you know, drinking bottled water, you know, just getting those gallon jugs or whatever, for the past, you know, year and a bit. But there's, you know, water's hard, there's, you know, manganese, iron and stuff like this. So, ended up picking up a old house water filter that I was gonna put in as a winter project until I had back surgery in November, so now it's a spring project. But then, that was actually before I was aware of the PFAS, you know, contamination. So, by the way, I'm currently in applications, engineered analog devices, but, by degrees in engineering physics. So, you know, throughout my career, been involved in a whole whack of stuff from, like underwater acoustics for anti-submarine warfare, surveillance systems, infrared, optical. Right now, working on battery formation and test, lithium ion cells for electric vehicle market and stuff like this, so a little bit of understanding of electric chemistry in there. So, I, I guess my background is such that I can get into almost any sort of problem and kind of almost get it from first principles. So, in this case, I've been doing, you know, just a little bit of, you know, my own research, just trying to understand how, how this can be, you know, dealt with, how can you, you know, remove it, you know, activated charcoal apparently is, is one possibility. But that's kind of one of those things where, yeah, whatever I kind of learn, I want to be able to pass it on to, you know, to other people, especially those on, on wells and stuff. I like the idea of low-cost solutions. I'm one of those people that, I like to make sure that, you know, I'm as self-sufficient as possible. And so, I wouldn't want to burden a whole whack of other people, you know, to solve a problem that I might have, whether I caused it or not. But, but that's kind of what I'm looking for, is like, or looking to try to, you know, understand if, if there is a way to, you know, deal with this in a, you know, cost-effective manner.
So, I don't know if you heard me at the beginning about the blue line and where the consent decree is?
I'm right across the street.
So, High Range Road is the, is the line? So, it's, so if, depending on where your well comes back, may not, not water will probably be available to you. So, I don't know that for sure, but I'm, my understanding is that's what it is. So, all right, I'll go back this way again, and I'll switch back after the next person.
Have you got the time to put into it? Same question. I mean, it real, this is really gonna involve a lot of backstory.
Right.
And, and a lot of investigation, and a lot of understanding of all the key players, and being able to take all that data and siphon it down into some sort of a coherent thought.
Yes. So, I do like a lot of, you know, data gathering and analysis as part of what I do for a living. And the other thing is, is that as a hobbyist, I do a lot of the same stuff. So, that's, and, and right now, I guess, working from home, so I don't have my, you know, one-hour, one-way commute into Wilmington, so that saves some time. And I guess, I'm also in meetings, depending on where the customers are, could be, you know, eight in the morning, could be 11 at night. So, I'm pretty flexible. Like, by that, I mean, it's like, they know I'm getting the stuff.
Yeah.
Done. So, if I wanted to take off the afternoon to go do something, it's like, I just have to make sure that my Skype button is yellow, that I'm off work. But apart from that, no, no, yeah, fairly flexible in that sense.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No questions.
Tom?
Thank you, George, for volunteering. George, you feel comfortable in this arena of doing water analysis and data gathering and then helping the town develop solutions? You feel comfortable in that arena?
Well, I'm, I'm never, never comfortable in any arena that I'm just getting involved with, until I start getting to, to know the, the landscape and stuff. But, no, I mean, it's, it's something where, yeah, like, there's like a lot of stuff here, you know, listening to some of the other people speaking. I guess, at the end of the day, if I look at it, you know, compare the stuff I'm doing, it's, it's different data, you know, there's actual research. I mean, I've got to read studies and make decisions or pass on recommendations based on that. So, instead of, you know, electric chemistry and lithium ion cells, it's gonna be, you know, PFAS or other, you know, remediation types of mechanisms. So, at the end of the day, yeah, yeah, there's gonna be a bit of, you know, a bit more, you know, work or research, if you will. But, but like I said, I'm gonna be doing it anyways for myself, because I'm likely gonna have that, that test come back slightly elevated. So, so whether, whether I do it, you know, for myself, for the town, you know, it'd be nice if the town could benefit from, from what I learn.
Well, again, thank you for stepping forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And no conflicts of interest that you can think of?
No, that I can think of. Like, yeah, ADI is a chipmaker.
Yeah.
But I don't think they're in the water clarification business.
No, no, that's great. Well, George, thanks for coming in.
All right.
Appreciate it. Hope you're feeling good with the back surgery?
Oh, yeah, I'm doing better. I just need to keep up with my exercises. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Lisa will be in touch.
Okay. Take care.
Mr. Lockwood?
Hi, sir. Your name and address for our records, please?
Paul Lockwood, 78 Chase Road. By way of introduction, you, I think you've probably seen the information I sent, Lisa. I was, I've been in the public health field, I was a public health official in Connecticut, I was the department head for two small health departments in Ridgefield and New Fairfield, Connecticut, where, where my function was to enforce the Connecticut Public Health Codes, which included approval of new wells, water supplies, things like that. I came up to New Hampshire in 1988, where I was hired as Senior Environmental Planner for CAQ Planning and Engineering. I was the water quality environmental expert for the, the firm, representing the firm and clients for land development projects. 1991, I was hired by the Department of Environmental Services, where I've worked up until my retirement a few years ago. I was a project manager and supervisor for several programs, including the New Hampshire Pollution Prevention Program and the Household Hazardous Waste Grant Program. I was also in the Air Division, where I was a transportation analyst, analyst, where we promoted source reduction, source reduction for the eco-emissions. As far as, you know, this whole issue goes, I've hopefully answered your questions that you've been asking. I have done limited research, because this affects me. I've, I've been to DES and EPA websites, I've downloaded information. So, as I say, I probably know as much as the average person about that. I'm trying to, trying to think of what else you've been asking. Do I have time? I'm retired. As long as I stay alive, I've got all the time in the world. I would love to go back to Concord. I loved Concord when I worked there, so I'm happy to go back to Concord. I, I do know a fair number of the people in the department, although sadly, I see them moving on like myself. But I know, for, I mean, I know Brandon Kernan, you've probably dealt with him for some of the issues you've been, with the PFAS issues so far. So, I do know my way around DES, that could be helpful. I, as far as a overall strategy that you're looking to develop, you know, I see a lot of parallels to, one of the major projects I worked on at DES was mercury elimination. I was part of the task force, we developed the strategy to eliminate mercury. A lot of similarities. I mean, it's ubiquitous, it's many, many sources, it's a lot of the same effects, neurological disorders, liver damage, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I, I have a good general background, I'm not a specialist, I mean, you've got a wealth of information already, from what I've heard. So, and basically, what I'm, just wanted to offer up my services, if I could be helpful, I'd love to help the town. I did work on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee with Paul Margolin for about five years, so I kind of know my, my way around the town a little bit. And I just wanted to offer my services again, if they could be of help. Obviously, with 20, 22 candidates, you've got a lot of, a lot of highly qualified people to choose from, so if I can help.
It's a great problem to have.
Yeah.
It is, really.
It really is.
Well, you know, that's usually the problem, is getting enough volunteers for the various committees here. So, I thought, well, I mean, you know, help you guys out, but motivationally, I also received a letter from the state, that there's a well within 500 feet of my, my well, that had a high PFAS. from, so if I can help.
It's a great problem to have.
It is, really. Well, you know, that's usually the problem, is getting enough volunteers for the various committees here. So I thought, well, I mean, you know, help you guys out, but motivationally, I also received a letter from the state that there's a well within 500 feet of my well that had a high PFAS count. One thing that I'm interested in, and in fact, I'm going to have my well tested a week from tomorrow, March 1st, by the state, so I'll have my answer. But I have a shallow, a driven well, it's not a bedrock well, and I'd be interested in knowing, and one of the research things I'd like to get into is, is this a deep aquifer issue or is this a shallow aquifer issue? You know, I'm drawing the same water that Penetrach Waterwell is, I'm on Beaver Brook. So, you know, if it's an issue there, then that's pretty major, especially if we're considering water systems.
We have asked DES to test our, some of our major aquifers in town. We don't have readings on them yet, and they have not tested them, although we have asked multiple times. Because we suspect the same thing.
Ah ha, okay.
Some of our major bodies of water, such as the Cohoes Reservoir and Scobie Pond and everything, are showing high readings. So we suspect many things, we just don't have, we need a process to be able to push this forward, so I appreciate you saying that.
Well, I mean, it would be great if you could identify all the sources, and I mean, one of my major strategies in DES was source reduction, which is to eliminate a waste before it becomes a problem. That works great with mercury. Thing is, you need something done fairly quickly here, you know. Working for DES, I know how slow the state can move. So you need kind of a two-pronged attack here, which is going to be, deal with the problem, but look at the source and eventually deal with that, too.
Agreed. Okay, I promise I'd go back this way this time. Just give you a break, Deb.
Paul, thank you for volunteering, and especially for serving on the Solid Waste Committee for five years you were there?
About that, yeah.
That's a great contribution, thank you so much for that. I'm very interested in the fact that you've been at DES for over 20 years, and you still have some active contacts there, I'm sure that we might be able to leverage and gather information, and you heard me mentioning to an earlier candidate. And the source of the, when we're talking about PFAS, as we know it right now, the source, the major source is a, one of the major sources is a production plant over in Merrimack that sends it out in their exhaust, and it comes, it's airborne, and it drifts to the ground and then gets into the water as it filters down into the ground. So our source, that particular source is not in, currently in the water, it's being put in the air and then settling onto the ground and then going down into the water. But there are other sources of PFAS as well, as we're finding. So my question is, do you feel comfortable continuing, re-engaging with DES to help us gather the data that we need for the town so we can make some informed decisions?
I would, but I think as Tom Garside said, you know, DES is a very honest bunch of people, and I can, I know the people to ask and where to look for certain answers. Leveraging is kind of a harsh way to put it. You know, I would certainly be comfortable making use of my contacts.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
Jim?
Yeah, realistically, you know, we want to move this as fast as we can, realistically. You've done the, you've been involved in the mercury reduction. Is it realistically to move real fast and have a short timeframe to get things done?
Let me clarify what "real fast" means. We need to come up with a plan, and we need to start to execute it.
If you're going to uncover every source that's out there and deal with that from a, probably a legislative basis or a legal basis, no. It's a slow process. If you want to come up with a solution, you know, it's an "end-of-the-pipe" solution, as we used to call it, that's going to be your fastest thing you can do. And admittedly, you know, a $200 or $120 million public water system throughout the town would do it, but, I mean, I can't imagine a lot of residents being happy with that, myself included. I mean, and, you know, it's great for water, but how about the, you know, disruption in the environment that would cause, you know, and a host of other issues.
Okay, thank you. We're the Granite State, we've got a couple of rocks out there, right?
I appreciate what you just said to Jim, but is there a way of saying, here's the big picture that's going to take a long time, but is there a way of actually accomplishing smaller steps relatively quickly to get to that end game, so that people aren't just looking at us going, well, it's been, it's been a year since those guys have been together, and we don't have as much, and now it's all changed and they got to go back and start all over again. I mean, is there going to be, do you feel that there'll be, in your mind, an ability to create a plan that would be able to have smaller accomplishments, solid accomplishments that can get us to that ultimate end game?
Oh, sure, I mean, that's, again, going back to that mercury issue, you know, once we identify the sources, we picked away at each one individually, some were easier than others. Dental amalgam, we worked with the Dental Association, we told them we were going to be adopting legislation to outlaw mercury in dental amalgam, and they were happy to work with us, you know, that was one source among many. I mean, you can work source by source. Again, you know, it's, this kind of stuff is slow, I mean.
I understand, but people need to feel like something's being accomplished, me included. You'd like to feel that, you know, there's an end to it, just like COVID. We're getting there to the end? You need that for your sanity.
Understood, and I agree with you. I mean, the things you can do immediately, you would certainly do.
All right, thank you.
Yes? And I think you passed the conflict of interest one, you already told me you're retired, so I think we're good.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Is Mr. Lombard here? Yes, sir, come on up. Hi, sir. Name and address for our records, once you get seated, please?
My name is Richard Lombard, I live at 46 Calle Road.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm fairly new to Londonderry.
That's okay.
And your problem with the water here came to my attention, I've been seeing it in the newspapers and things like that. And one of the reasons I saw it, and, you know, people say, oh, you've got a lot of background on that stuff, so that's why I'm volunteering. It sounds like I'm at a job interview here, but you've got a lot of great candidates. I've had quite a bit of experience in groundwater contamination, but especially from the health, safety, and science side of things. One of my past jobs, I was employed by the town of Burlington, Massachusetts. They had quite a serious groundwater contamination, and very similar to Woburn. Back in the 70s and 80s, you probably saw the movie?
Oh, yeah.
And it was like one town after another kept falling. These were from VOCs, Volta Organic Chemicals. And it was a common, there's a whole group of them, of solvents, and they were used by every industry, and they were just getting out. In the case of Burlington, the problem was their sewer system. Their sewer system was asbestos cement piping, which doesn't hold up to sewers that has solvents and acids in it. So the invert of the pipe corroded out, and if you know where the Burlington Mall is, next to it is Northwest Industrial Park, which goes right down to their main well field. And their well four in Burlington was worse than what well G was in from Woburn, for instance. Anyway, that's, I worked with that issue with the Board of Health, dealing with monitoring wells. Monitoring wells do tell you a lot about what's going on in your town. You're wondering where the problems are, look at the monitoring wells and where they are about town. Anyway, with the, in Burlington, the issue there was heavy contamination in and around the well fields. So the solution there was groundwater treatment, which worked fairly effectively. And back then, the concern was with VOCs, you're dealing with parts per billion. Now you're dealing with parts per trillion. And it's not too surprising that we're having these problems because we love, we love stuff. Everything we look at has things in it, chemicals go on and on. And these particular chemicals you're dealing with now, they were manufactured back in the 40s, and they're used in everything. There's over 400 of these polyfluoro chemicals, and they're in packaging, they're just everywhere. They're Scotchgard, they're, it's, it's just, and the fact that they're in, some of the problems with them, they're in the class of chemicals called endocrine-disrupting chemicals, which means they affect the endocrine system. That works at a very low chemical level. So now we're down to parts per trillion. And anyway, if you look at your fabric softeners and everything, the whole list of shampoos, the whole list of chemicals in there, they've been talking about these particular chemicals for years now, and finally, they're finding them in the water supply. And they're saying, oops, they mimic hormones and stuff like that in the body, so, and that's where we are. But I am familiar with monitoring wells, chemical contamination treatment systems, regulations and things like that. I've recently moved here from Massachusetts, so my work has been wastewater systems, I've worked at DEP in Massachusetts for a while, I've worked at a lot of cities and towns. I don't have much experience with the, dealing with the, your environmental group up in Concord here, or things like that. But, you know, but looking at various, I have looked at some of the reports, I've only been here, like I said, for a few months, but I have looked at some of the reports, you do have a lot of monitoring wells from the St. Sorbain?
St. Curbane, yeah.
Yeah, you do have a lot of monitoring wells, and it does, it does show that they're, to the chemical processing, the chemicals have gotten out, are in their air discharges, and they do, they have been falling out into the ground, and then working into the groundwater. But you do have a lot of observation wells there to look at, and usually groundwater, if you've got a river, tends to be flowing towards the river itself. So, anyway, I could go on for quite a while. Why don't I take, you want to do some questions or something?
Sure, that'd be great.
I just, I agree with you, it kind of makes me sad when I hear things that you're saying that's been going on since the 40s. We put our faith in government to protect us and make sure that things don't do these things, but here we are. I guess my question is, available time? Are you retired?
Yes.
All right, so you've got plenty of time, right?
I have some time.
Hey, he just moved into a new development, he's got to put lawn in, he's got all kinds of work to do over there.
That's not till the spring. That was really just my question, because there is a lot of time, and it sounds like you've done some of the back homework, and working with, whether it's Massachusetts or New Hampshire, it's relatively the same.
It's very similar.
So thank you for stepping forward, I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Sir, I'm just going to go through the rest of the board. I mean, but it's okay, whatever you want to do.
I'm not giving up yet, are you?
No.
Just checking.
Jim?
No, I want to, want to welcome you to town, and I appreciate you stepping forward. I have no questions at this time.
Richard, also thank you for stepping forward, this is a very important issue to the citizens of the town. I just wanted to ask you, when you were working in Burlington in the Board of Health, have you, did you ever run into something like this? I know you said you were working with VOCs, but have you run into PFAS or PFOS?
No, because that's, it's all new. Back then, I think there, there were probably people researched, talking about the possibilities, because endocrine-disrupting chemicals have been in the radar for quite a while, but no one has said, well, we're going to be regulating them. It's something in the future, possibly. But back then, it was parts-per-billion stuff, it was VOCs, it was tricloirethylene peroxide, even benzene. Benzene was the most restrictive MCL, which was .5 parts, .5 parts per billion or 500 parts per trillion. Now we're down to, we're talking about 11, 12 parts per trillion. And these things, people probably would have laughed at you 20, 30, 40 years ago, what are you talking about? But it's got to a point from very gross contamination to very subtle, and we're at that point now. We're looking at these things that we didn't even think too much about. They're affecting the endocrine system, there's birth, delayed birth issues, it's all the endocrine, it operates at a very low level. And I guess the question, it sounds like I'm listening to you, you're talking about putting in a, bringing in water anyway, as opposed to, I'm not, I'm not that aware of actually treatment systems they're actually using on a large scale like we did in Burlington to treat VOCs. In other words, taking groundwater up and then, or treating the water, but it sounds like, I think I'm hearing you're going to be bringing in a water system, or you hope to.
Well, it's one of, it's the nuclear option, I guess you could say.
And the other is treating, having people treat at the house?
Point of metric.
Point of, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's worth noting, too, that part of the responsibility of the task force would be to look at an array of options, to come back to the council and say, here are all of the different options the town would have going forward to try to mitigate this and treat the issue. Everything on the spectrum, from the water filtration to groundwater management to municipal water townwide.
Yeah, and to make a final recommendation. That's why we're going down this whole scientific path, because you've got to be smarter than I am, and I don't know the right answer, but I do know what the nuclear answer is. I thank you for your time, sir.
Okay, you're welcome.
Hi, once you're seated, name and address for our records, please.
Kate McDonald, 140 High Range Road.
Hi.
Hi, so I've been a resident here in Londonderry for about six years. I do have a background in public health, and I think this expertise proved to be more helpful in education outreach strategies and even stakeholder engagement. I joined, or wanted to join this task force really because I want to continue to live in Londonderry and to watch our family grow and to have our communities, our community be safe.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Kate, for volunteering to come forward. Sometimes it can be daunting to sit in that chair and be on TV and everything. Can you tell us a little bit about your work in public health, and I guess you've worked as an emergency coordinator, is that right?
Yep, so right now, I work for the South Central Public Health Network, we serve 10 towns in southern New Hampshire. My main focus of work is substance misuse prevention, and I also have a small portion in emergency preparedness. And the emergency preparedness work is solely just volunteer recruitment and helping with the COVID-19 response.
You feel comfortable in this, in this environment of this data gathering for the water and so forth?
Yeah, I mean, most of the data that we gather from surveys right now, so I'd be comfortable with that right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So how much, how much information do you know about this PFAS?
I have been following it for a couple, couple years, I would say, through Londonderry Times and any information from the town website.
And what do you think your strengths would be coming through a task force like this?
My strengths?
Yes.
Definitely education outreach and the stakeholder engagement.
Okay, thank you.
My question has been time, so.
I do work 40 hours a week, so I do have evenings open and weekends.
All right, well, thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, of course.
So Kate, you seem to represent the age group of about 50% of women with children who have called me and have had up to hour-long conversations with me about all of this and everything. Are you hearing from your friends about this and others, and, because you're right on the blue line, too?
Yep, so we do have a couple of friends that just moved right off of High Range, and they have the same concerns, same age group.
So you're hearing, what are you hearing in the community? I mean, what are you hearing from your friends and others? I mean, we think that this is critical, that we need to move as quickly as possible.
They know I'm in public health, so we have a friend that just moved in and they were sending me they were sending me the articles and just asking me questions about it, just concerned.
Okay, any other questions? Kate, thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for sitting here and waiting. I'm sorry that you were at the bottom of the list.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Is Mr. Robinson here?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Robinson reached out to me earlier today and said unfortunately he was called into a meeting this evening that he had to be at, but would still like to be considered based on his submission, written submission.
Okay. So folks, I'm, the interview part of this is concluded, but we're going to have a conversation here right now that I'm going to ask some opinions and questions of the councilors. You're welcome to stay and listen to us, and then we're going to probably move on with our agenda. So councilors, based on what, you know, we're hearing here tonight, and based on some of the level of experience that we've seen, you know, volunteer, I mean, one, the level of experience and expertise seems to be tremendous. I mean, it's just off the charts.
Agreed.
We do have 22 people that, you know, did step up, and, you know, and the, and the intent is to talk to everyone, but part of what we may want to think about, and I think there's been some previous conversations about this, is, is that we have, we have a resolution based on a certain criteria, but we have a lot of interest in town, and interest from these people, so that when we're going through interviewing the others, we probably should start seeing who, who else can help, because it's going to take many hands to push this forward. And I know there's been some conversation about this at the council level already, so I want to make sure it's clear to the public that, well, we may not select for the immediate task force, we're going to look for that task force to either create subcommittees or create subcommittees at the council level, because it is going to take a very heavy lift to do this, in the time period in which we want to do it. So, I'm sorry, sir, we're speaking at the council level, but thank you for, thank you for, I acknowledge that you're raising your hand. Any questions here?
Well, I, I really think that we need to think about having a core task force, and then having an alternate group to fill in for people, for work, for whatever, so that people don't have a, will be well-versed on what's been done, and can, you know, catch up on things relatively quickly. And I think gathering data, we need to have even, like you said, more, more, even more people volunteering, because from what I can see in other towns, they try to gather as many people for collecting data, surveys, grassroots efforts, handing out pliers, brochures, making sure that the community is engaged, because it really, really, really is very important that we have a lot of, lot of people involved, and we can get people going to Concord and having their voice heard, to make sure that we're going to get the most that we can for our community. So I agree with you really strongly that everyone who's stepped up for this should, even if you don't get on the board, you should stay engaged with it, because it's really, really, really important to bring as many perspectives and have as many people looking under as many rocks as possible, and bringing as much data as possible, because as they say, what is it? You need a, a lot of people.
Need a village.
There you go, we need a village. And we really, really do, and if you want your voice to be heard above all others up at Concord and in the federal government.
Anyone else?
Yeah, John, I know that we were looking at six people.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering whether or not we should have a conversation about adding another three people to the task force. And Deb's suggestion of possibly alternates, I don't think is a, is a bad suggestion. We have alternates in other committees. And, you know, this is such a serious, serious issue, that I want to try to keep as many people engaged as I possibly can.
So we would have to amend the resolution, which, which, we'll decide tonight by consensus whether we want to amend the resolution, but we'll have to do that, to be, to be able to do it. It's not, not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it.
Right, right.
We just have to go through the process.
Okay.
Tom?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little torn between the comments about expanding the committee to get more points of view versus the speed in which we want to achieve some, some results. The big, and I'll say that typically the bigger the group, the slower the progress is. So I guess let's just keep that in mind as we look at these, the two goals here about getting more points of view versus getting some early action identified. Those two might be in tension with each other, so I think that we need to consider that.
Agreed. I guess what we could do is, is we could bring a draft amended resolution for adding three more people, and then a separate draft resolution for keeping it at the six and adding subcommittees, in which we can try to figure out what those would look like over the next two weeks before March 1st. Would that be reasonable?
Yeah, because the subcommittees are going to help make it go quicker, because they'll be able to gather more information.
Yeah, we're just going to.
Divvying it up.
Not to scream, we've just got to make sure the structure's right so that we can, we can manage it. Because it's going to be up to us to manage it.
I know.
With Tom. It's not just Tom, it's going to take, it's going to take all of us to be engaged.
I understand.
Okay, anything else on this subject? Sir, I'm, you'll have your time to be interviewed, I'm not entertaining public comment tonight on this, I'm just discussing between the council. Okay, all right, so I'm going to move on to other business. Folks, we're going to move on with our business this evening, you're welcome to stay. Liaison reports, do I have anything new from the planning for any of the other boards?
John?
Yes?
I, I've agreed, the, I, I was recently named by the governor to be on the, on his housing task force, and as part of that role, I will also be coming to a planning board meeting soon. I'm not sure the exact date, I do have the date, I just don't recall the exact date, to brief the planning board on current legislation on housing issues. That will be the progress of that legislation or lack thereof, and how it might impact the town. So I'll be, I'll be briefing the planning board soon, over the next few weeks.
Terrific.
Hey, Tom?
I hear that.
Would it be possible for you to, to briefly do that with us as well?
Of course.
Just because I really think it's very important to see the direction that things are going in up in Concord. It's kind of, in my opinion, a little scary, but if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, next item, town manager report.
All set.
Assistant town manager report.
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to mention on behalf of Kirby that the town report is now up on the website, and the books will be available on March 8th, and then also given out at the elections.
Fantastic. Anything else from the council? Seeing nothing, I'll accept a motion, excuse me. The next town council meeting is March 1st at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. So thank you for attending this evening, and if there's not anything else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.